Okay, it looks like it's seven o'clock. The meeting has been called to order because you went into non-public prior to this. So if you'd stand and join me for the closing.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda revision? Nothing to add?
Sorry?
No, I'm just asking if there was agenda review.
Could you speak up?
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Kingswood Regional High School student presentation.
Good evening, welcome, members of the school board and members of the community. Thank you for joining us this evening. We have a lot to be excited about right now at Kingswood Regional High School. We are entering into the tail end of our first semester. Exams and assessments will be issued in about two weeks. And that leads us to the turn of the semester and with that, a lot of anticipation for the rest of the school year. We are well underway with winter athletics. We have a lot of our students who are out doing great things in the community that you're going to hear about shortly. And really just an energy in the building that folks are reinvigorated after the holiday break and looking forward to that transition between semesters. With that being said, I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Hills, who's going to introduce our student presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Oh, perfect. Good evening. Isaac Gagnon performing on piano for the school board tonight. Isaac is an outstanding student in teacher Bobby Burns' piano and world music class. He is performing Cray Luton Sea by Johann Sebastian Bach, which is not in the curriculum for most students. Music often employs a spirally curriculum that allows a large group of students to work on the same thing, but at different levels of advancement. Isaac has worked very hard on this piece, and we hope you enjoy. The competency that he is addressing tonight in his performance is presenting music. He is interpreting, developing, and he has refined some musical techniques and work for presentation and for your enjoyment. Further ado, Isaac.
Lead him to come back and play the piano in deliberative, right?
That would be a lovely question.
Thank you, that was terrific. Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is approving of minutes. The first minutes on the agenda are those from October 17th.
I have the song.
On the very bottom, very bottom. Turn this off.
Yes, I absolutely did.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 17th with some edits. I meant to bring them to the last meeting, but I forgot to bring them. So I brought them, I wrote them out for Kathy and I'll read them. So, one of the edits is, under the motion that was made to resume the regular meeting, I'd like the vote to be edited because I didn't remember voting originally yes and then no. I only remember voting yes, so to please edit the vote and remove no in parentheses next to the yes, next to my name. And then the other edit is under the discussion, in the discussion under the same motion, remove sentence two that says, quote, "Mr. Duchesne said that he would like his vote changed to no." And please instead insert the sentence, quote, "Mr. Duchesne objected to the discussions justified under NHRSA 91-8:3, subparagraf two, clause C and I, in accordance with policy BEDG titled Minutes in NHRSA 91A." And I wrote that all out and I printed out the policy.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second based on those minutes?
Because I wasn't there, could you add one brief, and so according to BEDG, we need a brief description of each subject matter discussed, and so on the statement that you made, could you suggest language about what the statement was about for the minutes? I was not actually there at the time.
This is under which, which discussion?
Board chair made a statement.
It was in non-public, yeah, I'm not really sure exactly what my statement was back in October.
I think Dr. Ericallian had some suggestive language or anything.
Yeah, I'm not really sure exactly what the wording is for, is it that?
Just, we need, just, so for example, Ms. Seibel made a statement regarding personnel. So some very general reference about what the statement, a very brief description, so.
It was probably about recent events, which legal, you know, discussion on recent events, I guess that would be an appropriate, an appropriate part of the statement. Charlene?
I would also like to borrow Brody's wonderfully written statement and insert also the sentence that I would like to begin, Ms. Seibel objected to discussions justified under NHRS A 91-8: Part Two, C and I, in accordance with policy BEDG titled Minutes in NHRS A 91A. So what I'll do is I'll just make a little note, because you're going to give this to Kathy, right? I'll just make a little note to include another sentence with Brody's name changed to mine.
No, I want my name still included in it, though.
No, no, I want another sentence, which instead of Mr. Duchesne, it says Ms. Seibel. So.
Speak into the microphone, nice and loud.
Oh, sorry, did everybody get that?
Repeat, please.
Oh, repeat, please, okay.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we take your edits, give them to Kathy, and at our February meeting, we'll bring these minutes back with all of the proper edits.
So table them for now, again?
Table them again until next meeting. Now that, now that all the edits are going to be submitted, we'll vote on the edits at that point.
All right, then I'll rescind my motion, and I will make a motion that we, that we table these minutes, I'll say postpone.
Postpone until February.
Postpone until our February meeting.
Okay, do I have a second to postpone these meetings until February?
I'll second.
Okay, so moved and seconded by Brody and Charlene, seconded. All those in favor of postponing passing these minutes as the edits are made. Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay. Okay, moving on, the minutes of the school board meeting from December 4th, were here a motion to approve or any edits?
So moved, I have no edits. Someone else may?
I have an edit.
Okay.
Want a seconded before discussion?
Sure.
Yep.
Charlene, seconded.
Thank you, just clarification on my report for the strategic plan, that's page five of six. Just for consistency and understanding that we don't do student surveys, so, and I apologize if I had used that term, but we suggest we change it to, and that a student-focused forum is also in development. Or, you know, focus, it's really a forum, we use the language forum generally, not survey.
Any, yeah, back Kathy? Any other changes?
Come on, just.
Charlene?
On page five of the minutes, I think, wait, which are, we're on the December 4th minutes, right?
Yeah, December 4th, page five.
Page five of the minutes, I made a comment on B E D D A. Oh, that was corrected. My apologies, I must have read an earlier draft.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, any other edits? Okay, all those in favor of voting the minutes for December 4th?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, moving on to the building and maintenance committee meeting on December 7th. Those members present were Jim Pittman, Dr. Jim Manning, Brody Duchesne, and Stephanie King from the board, were here motion to approve.
So, you want to make the motion, Jim?
Don't you allow a seconded?
Why don't you do the end verse?
All right, Jim makes the motion, Brody's second. All right, and those three, those three members.
Do we have any comments on that?
Any comments, any changes on those minutes?
Just, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mary.
And instead of digging out the sentence, the question is about the carpenter school, the addition of this front of the carpenter school, what is it you were referring, calling it, the security thing?
Nestle.
Oh, the nestle. Will it be going all the way up to the ceiling? It's not in the minutes, it's just referred to as, it is installed and I've seen it, it doesn't go all the way to the ceiling. I can look into that. Let's get back to you.
Okay, well, let me get back to you on that, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other edits on the minutes then? Okay, those that were there in favor, Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Okay. Moving, moving on to the UN Resources Committee meeting from December 12th. The board members present were myself and Tom Bigford.
I have a motion to approve. I'll make it to.
All right, and I'll second it because there's only a little.
Okay.
And I'd like to approve. That was a telling tough one, too. So, moving on to the finance committee meeting from December 20th. These board members that were there, myself, Tom Bigford, Jim Pittman, Charlene, were here motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Okay, there's, there's two, two motions before we approve these minutes, there's two additional items that the finance committee voted on. I think we have to vote on those as a. Oh, no, we're going to approve these minutes and then we'll move on to the finance, finance board, we have two additional things to vote on. So any, any changes or your motion to vote for those?
Do we get a second?
Who made the second? Tom, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, those, those in favor of approving the minutes of the finance meeting on December 20th, Tom?
Aye.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. And the other, well, the only other thing I don't have is the manifests.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, the manifests being signed tonight, the payable, accounts payable manifest that are being signed tonight, $2,127,516.33. The payable manifest being signed tonight is $2,914,881.27. Total manifest being signed tonight, $5,42,397.60. Your motion to approve the manifest being signed.
So moved.
Moved by Brody?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jim Pittman. Okay, any questions on the manifests? Okay, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie? Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well. Okay, and please carry that. And now it's time for public input. There's a mic right up at the top here, if there's anyone who likes to make some public input. Please go up, you have about three minutes, we'll have 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting and another 15 minutes at the end of the meeting. If anyone would like to speak. Okay, seeing no one at this time, we'll, again, we have public input at the end of the meeting as well, so we'll move right on to the student representative report. Elliot?
God, you'd think I'd be good at this. Thank you very much. The high school is reaching the end of their first semester, as was mentioned earlier, with finals and midterms approaching for any non-classes within the building. The middle school is reaching the end of their second quarters with class change overcoming soon, and considering the fact that the elementary school now uses trimesters, and I'm not the best at math, I'm not going to tell you where they are, but just trust, they're humming along very well. Student council is beginning their preparations for the winter carnival here at Kingswood. The lip sync themes have been narrowed down to either an idea of, it's a working title, but it's called Music From Heaven, which is basically deceased artist, or you have your choice of Super Bowl halftime artists, with the other possible, pardon me, the other possible ideas being narrowed down by the student council today. The dress-up days for that week are still unplanned, but we do know that Class Color Day will be the day of the assembly on Friday, and anything but a Back Back Day, Back Back Day is likely to be on the list due to its popularity. Moving on to the arts department, Kingswood Theater is starting their preparations for their production of Shakespeare in Love this spring. The public performances for that show will be March 8th and 9th. They will have the regional festival on March 16th at Kearsarge, and Kingswood will be hosting the state festival on March 28th and 29th. The middle school and the high school's theater performance class will each be putting up one act at the end of this month. The middle school's one-act show is going to be their last production of the year, so be sure to be there. And the theater performance class show will act as their final for their class, so be sure to come out and support these new actors who are learning how to get their stuff, and if you're Keaton Quinn, a little bit more of a veteran. The middle school and high school music departments are preparing for Arts Night, also coming up in March. That concert will be on Thursday, March 21st, and it will feature pieces from middle school band and chorus, as well as the high school chorus, band, and jazz band. Moving on, winter sports are well into their seasons, and there are a lot of games and meets this week. Tomorrow, we have boys' basketball at home versus Lebanon, and girls' basketball will be at Timberland. On Wednesday, wrestling will have a meet at South Egan, and boys' hockey will be at home versus Belmont. On Thursday, girls' hockey will be at South Egan. On Friday, there will be an alpine skiing meet at Cranmore. Girls' basketball is at home versus Plymouth, also on Friday. Boys' basketball will be at Plymouth on Friday. On Saturday, there will be another wrestling meet at Wettisquam, there will be an indoor track meet at Exeter. Girls' hockey will have a game at home versus Pinkerton, and boys' hockey will be at Pepper. That is all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Okay, now we're going to move on to the superintendent reports.
Thank you very much. First in superintendent report is the district update. I'll just highlight a couple pieces here. First, we are within the budget process, up for adoption at our meeting tonight, and we encourage the public to come to Deliberative Session at the Art Center on February 3rd at 10:00 a.m. Engagement by the community is very important, so we invite you and we hope you can join us. The Portrait of a Learner process is also well underway. The board approved the Portrait of a Learner survey for students. This is a survey that was approved for students, and so administrators and teachers and counselors are facilitating that very short survey for students, grades four through 12 across our schools during the month of January. Of course, parents can opt out, just be in touch with your principal if you choose to opt out of your student for that survey. And that is, those are the highlights I'd like to bring to the board this month. Thank you. Next, just some information for the board for some overnight field trips. The DECA program at LRTC will go to the DECA conference, as they do every year. We have very active robotics teams, and they are competing, so we have a few overnight and out-of-state competitions for our robotics team from the high school. And then we also have the ag program from LRTC, will attend leadership workshops with other FFA chapters around the state at Alton, just this weekend.
Can I ask a question?
Charlene?
Just, are there any female chaperones that could go on the overnight robotics trip if there are any female students?
I believe that third, is that a name, is that a person?
Is it Brian or Brian?
It's Brian.
We're good now. So we look at that, we always look at that. Thank you. We're in writing.
Thank you, yep.
So next, we have a very special treat. We have a, we have a second student presentation facilitated by our teacher, Ms. Marie DiCarlo. And I'll just give a brief intro while you're all, you're all getting set up. So Nights Against Hunger is presenting at our school board meeting tonight. It's recognizing that their 10th anniversary. They're going to cover their mission and organizational structure, as well educate and raise awareness about food insecurity for the board and community. They're going to provide information about their upcoming fundraiser, Empty Bowls. The annual budget has ballooned to over $35,000 this year, so it's really important that we're communicating and we're marketing this very special event. This is a student-founded and student-led organization that prioritizes the basic human needs of all students. Highlighting the work of Nights Against Hunger demonstrates that the district shares this priority and encourages the civic engagement of students who work hard to create a more just, inclusive, and caring environment in our school. So I'm thrilled that they requested to meet and to present today, so I'll turn it over. Thank you.
We've prepared a presentation, if you'd like to move your chairs to the other side of the table.
Yeah, thank you, why don't we just move up into the first and second row here? See?
Governor Wentworth, Regional School Board, Superintendent Ericallian, and community members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak at tonight's meeting. My name is Christiana, and I'm joined by Nights Against Hunger student leaders Marisol, Emma, Nate, and Stella. We've prepared a presentation about the history, vision, and future of Nights Against Hunger, and some information about an upcoming fundraising event called Empty Bowls. Nights Against Hunger was founded by a group of American government students who decided to transform a community service project on childhood poverty in rural areas into a long-term solution to food insecurity in their school. Founding members researched organizations that addressed hunger in New Hampshire, and after interviewing the founder of End 68 Hours of Hunger, Claire Plume, Kingswood students, with the support of Principal Guy Donnelly, Superintendent Kathy Quette Egbert, and the Governor Wentworth Regional School Board, launched Nights Against Hunger to address the issue of food insecurity amongst their peers in high school. In March of 2014, our first six bags were delivered to fellow students in need. Since 2014, Nights Against Hunger has distributed approximately 70,000 meals to students and has raised over $100,000 in private donations. We currently serve 70 identified students with an average of 60 bags delivered each week. This year, we have 48 members in our club. Food insecurity is a hidden epidemic in our country. 13 million American children face food insecurity in 2022. Carroll County has the second highest rate of food insecurity in New Hampshire at 16.5%, which is above the national average. And this short clip from a place at the table speaks directly to the way that rural hunger impacts education.
Cobacarago is really cool, and it's mostly, we're all the cowboys and cowgirls, well. We're just country people. Sometimes we run out of food, so we try to figure out something, probably as friends' food. We get really hungry, and, or to me, it's just growl, and sometimes I feel like I'm going to barf because it feels bad, but I really don't do it.
Hunger definitely impacts my classroom. I have had students come to me upset, and it's definitely a huge issue in our small community.
We are going to spend a little bit of time talking about how to use context clues to help us when we find words in the textbooks that we're reading.
One student in particular, Rosie, I just really felt she wasn't really applying herself in the classroom, and I couldn't figure out where that attitude was coming from. I felt that she just really didn't care about what I wanted her to learn, or that school was that important, and what I realized when I brought her in one day was, the main issue was that she was hungry.
I struggle a lot, and most of the time it's because my son gets really hurting, and I look at her and all I think about is food. So I have these little visions in my eyes. Sometimes when I look at her, I vision her as a banana, so she goes like a banana, and everybody in the class is like apples or oranges, and then I'm like, oh, great.
And everybody in the class is like apples or oranges, and then I'm like, oh, great.
I deliver food bags every week from the food bank at our local church. I was one of those kids that was hungry. Growing up, it was difficult. It was embarrassing.
My dream is, have you heard of the stream makeover, Home Edition? I just wish they would come and actually rescue us from our house, but we don't have a story like they do.
We are tying the arms behind the backs of children as they go into public schools. We're making it so that we spend money for teachers and we get delivered to them a lot of children who can't learn.
They lost potential. You see, some of those kids could potentially be a great scientist or go on to be leaders in our own forces, but the impact that hunger has messes everything up. And as a result of that, we're weakening our nation.
We see our communities in Rosie's story and ask ourselves, in one of the wealthiest countries in the world where excess food is plowed into landfills by the time, how can we let young people go hungry? The Nights Against Hunger is five students, four students. We are a student-led and run organization that is dedicated to fighting food insecurity in our school community. We believe in civic participation, and we believe that it is our responsibility to take care of one another. We believe that true service is an act of humility because we all need help sometimes. Nights Against Hunger is also a unified club. Students in the Community Life Skills Program pack our bags with us as a part of their curriculum. We cannot function without their help, and we believe this challenges the traditional ideas of givers and takers within communities. Nights Against Hunger supports the particular needs of teenagers who are experiencing food insecurity. Whereas younger students are often less self-conscious about receiving help, privacy is very important to many middle and high school students who receive our bags of food. So Nights Against Hunger members and advisors do not know the students they serve. Bags are distributed through the counseling department in the high school or placed in lockers in the middle school. The flyer on this slide is a new way we are experimenting with technology as a way to protect our students' privacy while also making our bags more accessible to the students in need. Students can discreetly scan the barcode or the QR code with their cell phones and access to Google Form where they are put in contact with our school social worker. Most students who receive our food have been referred to by a trusted adult. This flyer was a way for students to be able to have more agency and get help when they need it. In order for our bags to go out each week, we have developed a subcommittee structure to our club in which subgroups specialize in smaller parts of the overall process. We have a foods committee with Ms. Logan, a finance committee with Ms. Puller, and a fundraising and public relations committee with Ms. Mary DeCarmo. The slides that follow break down all of the different steps that it takes to run a weekly and school supplemental food program. First of all, we need money to buy food, and Nights Against Hunger is funded entirely through private donations. Student leaders in the fundraising and PR community write grants, give community presentations, and organize fundraisers in order to meet our annual operating budget.
Our food committee is in charge of ordering food, restocking, organizing, and inventorying our food supply. We have updated our inventory spreadsheet and inserted a formula that colors supplied, that codes color supplied levels. Red code through low and alerts us when to reorder, yellow is running low, and blue and green are all set. Nights Against Hunger has adopted and responded to changing needs of students. In addition to ordering and inventorying, our food committee redesigned our entire ordering system. Families who rely on emergency food often end up with a surplus of certain items. We observed that many students only wanted some of the items in our racks. In order to reduce waste and find new ways to help fellow students get food that they enjoy and eating quantities that fit their weekly circumstances, our food committee developed an ordering menu shown above. Each week, students select the food they want in their bags. We do not limit the number of items students can select on their forms, providing the opportunity for students to not only themselves but other members in the family if needed. Twice a year, Nights Against Hunger students revise this order sheet based on the feedback Packing and distributing bags is a joint effort with community life skills students and Nights Against Hunger members. Nights Against Hunger members help design an accessible process and system so students with a wide variety of skills and abilities can participate in completing bag orders. Visual representation of food products help with easy identification of bags regardless of breathing level. Due to an increased number of bags packed, students start as early as Tuesday putting together bags. Backpacking continues throughout the week. Do you have food bags ready for Thursday delivery?
This year, roughly 60 bags are sent out each week of the school year from September throughout the beginning of June. This is a major increase from last year when we were averaging 35 bags a week. For perspective, we are currently distributing only 10 bags less per week than we were at the peak of the pandemic. In front of you are the 60 bags that are going to be delivered this coming week. We wanted you to see what 60 bags look like. When we look at them, it makes us realize how great the needs are in our community, as well as the scale of the Nights Against Hunger operation. This year, we need community support more than ever. In order to meet the rising demands for bags and increasing food costs, the annual Empty Bowls fundraiser is critical to our success. Please join us Friday, February 9th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Kingswood Cafeteria for the return of Empty Bowls. Come celebrate 10 years of Nights Against Hunger fighting food insecurity in our school community and raise awareness about this important issue that impacts education. Together, we can make a commitment to ensure that all students in Governor Wentworth Regional School District have reliable access to food. Just like Nights Against Hunger was passed on to new student leaders when our founders graduated, it is now passed on to us and to you. Governor Wentworth Regional School Board Superintendent Ericellian and Principal Fen Mularkey, since bags begin to leave our pantry in March of 2014, Nights Against Hunger has never missed a weekly food delivery to students in need, not even during the pandemic. It is our turn now to make sure that this tradition continues. We are grateful for the invitation to speak tonight because it demonstrates a shared commitment to tackle the issue of food insecurity together as a school district and broader educational community. Please note that Empty Bowl flyers are available for anyone to take with them tonight. They are located on the table by the door, and if any member of the school board or superintendent office is interested in taking a tour of our food pantry, we would love to host you. Thank you for the opportunity to share about Nights Against Hunger. We appreciate your support and look forward to collaborating in the future.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It's a great, great program, and we're proud of each and every one of you. Thank you so much for doing that. And assuming that the address that's on the brochure, we'll send a check to. Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Thank you again for that incredible presentation. Okay, so next on the agenda. This is for information, discussion, and action school board meeting calendar for the 24-25 school year.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the calendar as presented. I accept the question.
Okay, it's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Brody made the motion. Jim, seconded. Brody, what's your comment?
I was, I was just wondering, March 10th, is that the day before town meeting?
Well, it probably is.
I'm thinking, because some of us may need to work the polls and they need to be there very early, and if we had a meeting that went, say, which happens from time to time, 11, they might be very tired the next day. Think about maybe even a moderator who may run into that issue, so.
Well, that being said, it's Saturday town meeting.
You guys do Saturday. You guys are smarter than some of our other member towns. I wish we did Saturday. Yeah, well, I don't know, would it make more...
Wouldn't that be voting day as opposed to town meeting day? I know we have a voting day on Tuesday.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, it's voted well.
Well, yeah, sorry. I'm thinking, because Wilkborough is SB2, I don't know what, I know Tuckenborough isn't SB2, so yes, that would be voting day. Yeah. I mean, all right, I'm fine with it then. I'm just, just putting that out there.
Well, thank you. All right, any other comments on the calendar? Yes, Mary.
Kind of along the lines of awareness of meetings across the calendar, I would like to suggest that the respective meetings of the school board, the location and time, whatever else needs to be included in that, be added to the respective towns' town calendars. H, yes, H, school, town, and district. I know for, for instance, Wilkborough has, we can access on the town calendar all the different things that are going on. It may be yet another way. We have many varied ways of sharing the daytime and location of the respective school board meetings. Perhaps to add that too somehow, members in charge of that kind of thing to reach out to the respective towns and ask if that could be included on our calendars.
Sure.
Yeah, kind of coattailing on Brody's concerns, looking at November 4th, which is the day before the national elections on November 5th.
Oh, I missed that one.
You missed that. And I know as the aforementioned town moderator, that evening, we will be preparing school for that election. Now, of course, it'll be in effigy, but Osme, but I think reflecting the same sort of concerns that not only will we be engaged in that, but, you know, Election Day is an extremely long day, especially for the federal elections. So I'm not sure if we want to push that off to the following Monday.
So the following Monday is Veterans Day, so we would not, that would not be eligible. So we did look very carefully at each month and each date to make sure there were no conflicts.
Are we required to have another Monday?
No, we are, we are not. If, if another day of the week, we'd be better for that week. We can do it on Wednesday, the 6th, or Thursday, the 7th.
Yeah, I guess my, and I agree with you, Jim. I mean, I serve for the federal and state elections. I serve as a ballot clerk always because my, my town clerk always asks me, and I'm a sucker, I can't say no to her. I don't for the municipal elections though, because either I'm on the ballot or my father's on the ballot. But my only hesitation with changing it, even though I would personally benefit, is usually the taxpayers and the residents can always depend, like we've always done on that same day. I'm not opposed, but I could imagine there might be a few upset people that are like, why is it on a Thursday instead of a Monday like it's always been? But then again, this will be published, you know, months in advance, so.
Yeah, and we can certainly make it, make it known, not only at our September meeting and our local meeting, that in the following meeting in November, Thursday, Thursday, I take the pick. And just continue to emphasize, in fact, that that one meeting will be on a different day of the week.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's a compelling reason. It's not an arbitrary, you know, sort of, we just feel like it.
Correct. So what day, what day would work best for the, for the SA, you know, the SAU preparation for this kind of thing as well? You know, what other things they have going on those particular days?
Would be Middleton meetings. We also need to consider the Middleton schedule we're bringing to them on Wednesday. Their meetings are typically the second Wednesday. We have finance meetings that week, we already have a conflict. So we have to consider the, yeah, the Middleton meetings and committee meetings.
What about Thursday?
If we did Thursday, the 7th, is that a possibility? Because the finance meetings aren't until the following week.
It's less time between the meeting and...
Yeah.
We could do that.
Okay, how about, let's, we want to modify the calendar then. You know, we have a meeting to be on Thursday, the 7th, at 6:00 at the Osme Center School as just...
Do you want that as a motion?
Sure. We'll make that motion to amend the calendar and vote on the calendar itself.
Well, I would make the motion to change the November 4th meeting to November 7th, which is Thursday.
A second. Okay, we'll move to the second and at the November 7th, the meeting, November 4th meeting will be moved to the 7th on Thursday. All those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
Jim, what's I as well? Okay.
Thank you. Next, Budget Adoption Hearing. So this budget hearing presentation, I'll turn it over to the committee chair.
Okay, we all have a PowerPoint ready for the deliberative session for tonight. I'm going to read through the budget presentation as it, as it exists as of tonight. Moving on to the budget, the budgeting process preparation begins in October with staff members in each school providing the high school principal with their budgetary needs. Each administrator submits a budget to the SAU office. This is administrator and superintendent of schools meets with each school leader to discuss their requests. If there is a large increase in the individual budget, unless there is a specific, a special circumstance or a very well justified rationale. The, there you go. The administrator is asked to review the budget and reduce it while keeping priorities intact.
Check. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm, yay. Is there supposed to be something on the screen right now?
We're going to have the PowerPoint presentation at the deliberative session.
Right, I understand that, but I think there are people who aren't privy to what we're looking at. I was just wondering.
We weren't planning on projecting it, but we can set that up if we want to take a minute or two.
Okay, if you, I guess if we have something that we can put up on the screen, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just had a little...
All right, okay, that's fine.
Do you want to move to recess for...
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we have an emotion. We'll just recess for five minutes while we set up the screen. I think we can start with the other two board members up showing, which I think they've probably heard this presentation before, so I don't think I have to wait for the proper to now. Okay, moving on to the budget, the budgeting preparation begins in October with staff members in each school providing the high, the school principals with their budgetary needs. Each administrator submits a budget to the SAU office. The business administrator and superintendent meet with each individual, each school leader to, to discuss their requests. If there is a large increase in the individual budget, unless there is a special circumstances or a very well justified rationale, the administrator is asked to review the budget and reduce it while keeping priorities intact. Personal requests are made at the same time. Requests for positions may or may not proceed to the finance committee depending on the strength of the rationale aligning the need for the position. This year, we discussed additional, additions and reductions in positions. Public meetings in November to discuss the budget this year were held on November 14th, 15th, and 16th. Following these meetings, additional cuts were made in order to lower the budget further. After tonight, there will be one more opportunity to hear about the budget at the deliberative session on February 3rd at 10:00 a.m. Although total enrollment is for the most part stable, there are some changes in enrollment at some... Although total enrollment is for the most part stable, there are some changes in enrollment at some of the schools. Last year's total enrollment was 2,131. This year, it's 2,116. The high school enrollment is lower than it was last year. However, the incoming classes over the next two years will likely bring the number back up. Carpenter increased by 12 students, and Ossobe also increased by seven students. The largest decrease was at the middle school with 27 fewer students this year, 26 fewer students this year. I'd like to start with a review of the ESR funds, also known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. They are COVID-related emergency funds from the federal government that help keep schools open across the nation. The funds must be used for activities and projects that are related to COVID and acceptable under the grant guidelines. Priorities were established for use of these funds. In order, here are the priorities we set. First, student safety and well-being. Next, addressing learning loss and improving student achievement. And third is looking at enhancing our HVA systems for student health and safety, and as an investment in our schools that will help to free costs down the road. The funds were available in three phases. ESR one, or the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES, was the first phase of the funding. These funds were to purchase personnel, protective equipment, plexiglass, chrome bolts, software for remote instruction and meetings, cleaning supplies, tuition for remote learning programs, and nursing services. ESR two, or the Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, C R R S A, funds, devoted to increasing the academic achievement of our students. Including in this grant is work for, under the umbrella of the New Hampshire Learning Institute, including consultation and professional development for teachers, math coach positions in each of the schools, a curriculum project manager at the high school, social and emotional learning resources, additional reading materials, funds for more extensive summer programming, and for after-school tutoring and transportation. ESR three, or the American Rescue Plan, is the third phase of the largest amount of money, and the largest amount of money. This is where the third priority of the school board commencement to play. The ESR three grant is the largest amount of money at $6,582,666. It must be expended by the end of 2024. The grant guidance expressly identifies heating, ventilation, and cooling systems as a supported activity. Consideration of putting the money into our buildings will save us the cost of incurred additional costs down the road to operate these systems. There will also be funds available to address learning loss in addition to HVA C A fundings. It is important to note, for the public to know, that grants cannot be used to lower the tax rate. But before we go any further, we've submitted our application to the state of New Hampshire for use of the ESR three funds for the HVA process that we talked through and that we approved as a warrant. Right now, we're waiting for approval from the federal government to move that process forward. The state right now is contacting the federal Department of Ed for approval of our application. Hopefully, that will happen. If it does not happen for some reason, we will pivot and use the money for other educational processes and not be able to handle our building needs, but we'll take it a step at a time. Right now, the application is for the HVA C process that we've identified in the past. Should we have to pivot to a different use of those funds? We will have to require public hearings to discuss uses of those funds. The federal government requires that in order to receive funds, we are not disproportionately reducing state and local per pupil costs in schools, and that the district is not disproportionately reducing the number of full-time staff per pupil in high and high-need classified schools. These grants are more complex than our typical grants and have a variety of requirements imposed by the federal government, including formulas to ensure we are following the guidelines. There is some flexibility during the grant period to modify the grant activities. For example, if an activity results in some leftover funds, those can be reallocated. However, any unspent funds must be returned to the federal government. And you can see on the screen that's up there right now, the ESR one funds were $536,417. The entire amount was committed. The ESR two funds, again, were $2,898,158, and that entire amount was committed. And the ESR three funds, which we're waiting for final approval on, is $6,582,666. So far, only $39,047,47 have been committed. However, all of that money will be used for the HVA systems and the learning loss process if our application is approved by the federal government. Looking at the general fund, the decreases you see in these line items are the result of our administrators scouring through each school's expenses to cut back where they could. Items related to building and maintenance were also reviewed and cut back to offset the repairs and maintenance list that needs to be attended to this year in addition to the capital improvement list. The professional service line represents about one-third of the increase in the general funds. This line is contractual for our students who attend Lakeside Academy, one of the district's alternative programs for non-essential students.
Yeah, let's skip over the employees.
Oh, well, let's go back to.
Sure, that was not intended.
Do we go back to employees? There we go. I'm sorry. The general fund, the employees section of the general fund, schools are labor-intensive organizations. Governor Warren of the Regional School District wages make up up to 70, approximately 76% of the budget. The wage line does not include the Kingswood Complex Resource Officer. This position will be presented in a warrant article and will be addressed later in this presentation. This budget includes two math coaches and a one-year curriculum project manager at the high school. Through reductions in class size and retirements, these additional staff positions will have a relatively small impact on the budget. Okay, we can go over to the next page, because we already covered that. Okay. Here's the second half of the general budget. General supply budget. We continue to see cuts in supplies, books and other printed materials, replacement equipment, and replacement furniture in order to balance out the increases in some of the other areas. The increase in new equipment line is a continuation of a district-wide technology project to recable each school, as well as updating one aspect of our technology infrastructure at the Kingswood Complex. The new furniture line item shows a small increase over the previous year due to the middle school and special education department needs. Each year, the budget, the board puts forth a building and maintenance warrant article for capital improvements. It has varied between $150,000 and $200,000. This year, when it has, the years when it has been $150,000, we invariably have projects that are not completed and need to be considered the following year. This is the case this year. The warrant articles include, warrant article includes the funds for three compressor replacements at the high school, middle school, and the technology center. Carpeting replacement in Ossobe in several classrooms. Replacement of the parking lot lights of the Kingswood Complex, and sidewalk replacement at Effingham. Our hopes and estimates for all the capital improvement needs comes to $275,264. For the past several years, we have presented a turf field capital reserve article. Capital reserve was established to avoid the district having the full expense of replacing the turf field all at once. The life expectancy of a turf field is 10 to 12 years, at a cost of approximately $775,000 to replace. Currently, we have approximately $736,000 in reserve. When this fiscal year is at the end, we hope to add the $60,000 from this year's warrant article for a total of $796,000. We have been able to extend the life of the turf to 15 years through meticulous care. With the continued support of the warrant article, we should have the full cost of the replacement in 2025. The Resource Officer, a one-year article, is being presented. Our community approved a Kingswood Complex Resource Officer via a warrant article last year. The Kingswood Complex Resource Officer is in addition to the longstanding SRO at the Kingswood Regional High School. We are proposing a one-year warrant article for the Kingswood Complex SRO in order to review data before considering the position as a regular district budget item. The last warrant article is requesting $150,000 for the Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. Capital Reserve Fund was established in March of 1990. These are funds that are placed in the reserve fund specifically for large maintenance projects that stay in this account year after year if not used. Currently, there is approximately $183,000 in this account. The district facilities are showing their age, and the projects that are necessary to maintain them are getting more costly. This is a vehicle to which we put money away just as a turf field reserve, so that the operating budget does not have to take on the weight of this expense. These are sections, there are sections of roofing that need replacement. Carpet replacements for older buildings, which will, which require asbestos abatement. Window replacements at Carpenter School that will be custom manufactured due to the historic status of the school. Over the past several years, we have retired our bonds in Ossobe, Effingham, and New Durham. Our principal and debt for the Kingswood Complex continues to decrease. This coming year's reduction is $79,464. Interest increases as our principal decreases because we receive less state billing aid with the reduction in our principal. The total increase in the debt service is only $403, or 0.1%. RSA 40:13, the Official Bylaw Law, also known as SB two, determines what is to be included as part of a default budget. A default budget is the amount of the same appropriations as contained in the operating budget authorized the previous year, reduced or increased by obligations mandated by law or previously incurred, such as debt service and contracts. One-time expenditures are not included in the default budget. The purpose of presenting a default budget is to give the voters an understanding of what a budget would look like should a proposed operating budget be voted out. The default budget is $1,405,563 lower than the proposed budget. And finally, dates to remember, January ninth is the last day for petition warrant articles. January 29th is the last day to post the warrant budget and default budget. January 24th to February 2nd is the filing for the, the last days for the filing of district officers. And then that includes school board members and the moderator. And February 3rd, 2024, is the deliberative session at 10:00 a.m. at the Kingswood, Kingswood Art Center. And that's, I will take any questions on the budget. Again, if anyone has an opportunity to review the budget numbers, my number is posted if anyone would like to give me a call and ask questions about any of the budget items or any of the line items within the budget. Really, please feel free to give me a call, and it would be helpful if you wanted to. If you need additional information to do that before the deliberative session, so we can have answers to any of the questions that might come up. Let's see, who is up for reelection this year? Okay, the office, the school board members that are up for reelection this year are Stephanie King from New Durham, Mary Patri from. Mary Shiller. Mary Shiller, at large, and you're.
At large.
An at-large member, she is currently living in Wolfboro. And I'm up for reelection for Tuckenboro. Again, if there's anyone out there that would like to run, here's an opportunity. In January, January 24th to February 5th, to sign up, come to the SAU office and sign up for the school. Thank you, so. Tom?
Before we move on to a harder, this means point where I propose my change to.
Not, not, not quite. We're adopting the warrants, which is. First, we adopt the budget, and then we adopt the warrant articles, we don't talk about your change. Brody?
I had a, I had a question, I don't know if now would be the best time to, but I can't think of any other time. I know the school district is allowed in state law to put the vote totals of the warrants on the ballot. It can be done either, that process can either be done by asking the taxpayers and the residents through a warrant article, or this board can decide to put the vote totals. And I think it would be good for transparency for us to put the vote totals on the warrant. I think it helps inform the voters and the taxpayers and the residents, they can understand, you know, if something wasn't recommended, it was a close vote, to say, no, we disagree with the school board, or if something was unanimous, to understand that, that there wasn't any disagreement. I know some municipalities in our school district do that, and I think it would be good for public transparency for our school district to do that.
So you're talking about an eight, nine, nothing vote, or a seven, two vote, or something for the warrant?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I have no, no opposition to that. We do, we do have two board members missing tonight, so we'll have to have two extensions listed on each one of the warrants, or that's the case?
It just won't count, it won't, it'll just come out, it'll have seven, it'll lose here. So yes, no, or seven, so.
Yeah. But it would be like seven, seven, zero.
It's in here, it's not, no two, or seven, five.
Oh, okay. I, we've never done that before, so, okay.
Do you want me to make a motion, or we just go?
No, we, I don't think we really need a.
Motion to add the vote of the board? We'll just, we'll just take the vote of the board and have it, we just, part of the final motion. Yes, Jim?
I just want to be sure I understand what you're asking. Are you saying that these will be included on the warrant articles when they're put on the ballot?
Yes.
I just have one concern on that. I think that from my experience working in the polls, there's a, seems to be a fair amount of confusion with people reading these warrant articles already. And I'm just concerned that it adds another element of confusion. I think it's good enough if there's a majority proposal to accept or reject a particular warrant article. I feel like that's enough. You start adding numbers. I feel again, like, for some people, they're already not sure what they're going on, they'll just add one more.
I mean, I don't know if you guys put it on your warrant, the vote totals. I know Wolfboro just says in bold under the warrant article, it says recommended by the school board, and then it says by a vote of, you know, seven to none. board, and then it says by a vote of, you know, seven to none.
Our budget...
Well, it's very, Wolfboro Selectman and Budget Committee, but for us, it would be school board, so it would just say recommended by the school board of a vote of, you know, and then the total amount. I think, I think taxpayers probably would, you know, voters and residents would probably like to know when the board is completely unanimous, when the board might have some disagreements, so they might look closer into a warrant article or the spending priority, or when the board might have not recommended something, but almost a majority of the board did a split total, let's say like, you know, four, three to not recommend, but we still put it on the warrant, which happens, so the voters can say, oh, that was a close one, but I don't agree with them not recommending something. I think it gives context.
I think the recommendation, or I would, I would say would be more appropriate is if it's unanimous vote for the board, then it's put on the board, recommended by the board, if it's a split vote, then recommended by the board, then maybe put number one there.
Okay, that's, that's fine, if you can do both, the DRA allows that.
So, we would, sorry.
In other words, you're going to vote on the budget now, okay, so I, I'll take a, take a motion to approve the budget, all right, and in a second, we can have any discussion, and we'll take a vote on that, if the vote is unanimous, it will be listed as support recommended by the school board. If the vote is, if the vote is less than unanimous, then it will be recommended by the school board, six to one, five to two, whatever the, whatever the vote may be. But if it's unanimous, if it's unanimous, we'll just always put it on the board.
You know how I like consistency, is this on? Yes. Why wouldn't we want to put unanimous on the ones where it is unanimous? Excuse me, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, that's what I was...
I, I don't know if it makes a difference or not, it's just, we put the vote recommended by the board unanimously.
Here, here in the discussion, I'll make a motion that we put the vote totals on all the warrant articles, recommended or non-recommended, for this year's warrant.
Specific numbers or unanimous?
The specific numbers vary every single one, so even if it's unanimous, it's just seven, zero.
I'll second that.
All right, so it's a motion on the floor to include the number of the school board members voting for each one of the board members, each one of the warrant articles as such on the warrant articles. All those in favor then, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
And she is going to vote no on that as well, so that particular, it does pass, five to two. So now we're going to vote on the budget itself, your motion to accept the budget.
So moved.
Removed by Charlene.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Any discussion on the budget?
I, I find the number right now that we're at, the 4.23% to be, I mean, kind of, kind of tough, especially as I've seen people in the newspaper or online or...
Brody, we've already discussed the numbers, we made a special meeting on what's going to be included in the budget, what's not going to be included in the budget, if you want to vote against the budget, as presented, you can certainly do that.
But I'd like us to consider amendments to the budget, I mean...
That's, this is not the place to do that.
Then where would I have done that?
I would have done that at our meeting of the 20th of December.
I can't, that's a finance committee meeting, I can't put it at those meetings.
We couldn't have voted it that way.
You didn't make any recommendations on changes at that meeting either.
We're not allowed, yeah, we're not allowed to, because there would have been a form of the board, we were just...
You can make recommendations, the finance committee can accept your recommendations or not.
Jack, I, I understand what you're saying, but we're all nine, nine members of this board equal.
What changes do you want to make tonight?
I, I don't agree with us adding the curriculum project manager back into the budget.
That was recommended by the finance committee, we can take a vote on that if you'd like.
That's, then, I mean, that's, I'd like to make, and there are some other recommendations that I've made that the finance committee didn't make, but the entire board may not entirely agree with the finance committee's recommendations, and I think this is the most appropriate forum for us to discuss the budget, to make any amendments, to say yes, to say no, and then to, you know, to vote on...
Make your, make your motion to, and then we'll vote on each one of your motions.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we reduce the budget's bottom line by $145,799 and remove the curriculum project manager position.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Stephanie. Okay, all those in favor? Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
No.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
No.
Chair votes no as well, okay, so that, it does, it does pass, we're going to eliminate the curriculum project manager for a three, and what else do we have, Brody?
I, personally, some of these open positions we have that I mentioned in our last meeting, some of them are non-mandated, and they've been open for, you know, two-plus years, in some cases, maybe even three years since before I've even been on the board. You know, I'd just like us to consider, you know, considering how much wiggle room we have there with the current increase, I'd like us to get below 4%, and I'm wondering if we could reduce that. I mean, if you estimate that of the 34 open positions, each one costs the taxpayers total $30,000, which is very conservative, there's $1.02 million there, I'd like us to consider removing about $320,000.
Have you, have you chosen which position to go, to get eliminated?
No, I think that would be best for the admin to decide.
So as far as positions that are posted and unfilled, I'm concerned with eliminating some of those positions, some of these positions are legally required for special education services, parent professionals, this board already approved school psychologist position that remains open, and that's a position that would greatly support our, our special education and students' support with mental health. We're currently contracting services because we can't fill some positions, whether it's for parent professionals or for special education evaluations, so in effect, it's costing the district more when we have not yet filled those positions. I think there's an opportunity to fill those positions at the beginning of the school year at a later time, and we've also created more flexibility in our hiring practices, so we are hopeful that we'll be able to fill positions within the next school year, but I, I definitely hesitate and I caution the board to eliminate positions that are, that are posted, because every position we have posted is, is a need.
I guess the only, the only reason why I bring it up is because I see, you know, like, six or seven recess proctors that have just been open positions, and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to fill, fill those recess proctors. Now, I understand that there's a need, we don't want to have to have teachers out of recess extra time, we'd rather have them maybe doing classroom prep during that recess period, but, I mean, you know, we're raising these funds, we're not filling these positions, and I just have to wonder, you know, if we can get to a closer, more reasonable bottom line number. Last year, the budget went up almost, I think it was 4.4%, this year, we're nearly at that number, but inflation's nearly half the amount, so I'm just, I'm trying to think of creative and appropriate ways to respect the needs of the students, also respect the needs of the taxpayers, respect the needs of the teachers, but try to get us to a little bit lower of a number, we usually shoot for about three to three and a half percent, and we're starting to stray from that number, so I'm trying to think of ways to do that, and I've sat through the hearings and listened to everything, and, you know, I think that might be a creative way. I mean, we have, we have a lot of these unfilled positions, and, you know, maybe we can slowly start bringing them back as our budget numbers start to get closer with that, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we reduce the bottom line, the employee expense, wages, and other benefits, $320,000.
Jim, can I just interject with what passed just momentarily ago, the $145,000 for the curriculum manager? I took that out, and can I just update you on what that bottom line looks like? So now, without that position and the wages associated, or the benefits associated with that, we're down to 3.988 overall, just to let you know, just wanted to give you a second.
Thank you.
I just have a, a difficult problem eliminating positions when you don't, when you don't know what those positions are. You know, a number is a number, and we can, we can just reduce, in any, we can reduce the entire budget by a particular number, but who is that really affecting? And, you know, when we, when we talk about positions that are open, and they're not all classroom and specialty positions, there's food service positions, there's bus driver positions, etc., which ones do you want to eliminate that are not, that you don't think are necessary, if we can hire those people?
I think, I think there are some positions that, at least in my personal opinion, that I've seen going through, the open positions that are non-union, non-mandated by, you know, not mandated by the state or federal government, that, again, have been open for two-plus years, but I'd like the admin to make that final decision, and to talk with the staff to decide that, but I'm thinking about the taxpayers, I mean, Wolfboro's budget's up 16.8%, our budget's going up, you know, another plus four percent, and, you know, the shame is, is that the state doesn't constitutionally adequately fund education, but the reality is that the taxpayers, it's a difficult concept for them to understand, and, you know, I, I know people can vote it down, but I think we should be trying to present budgets that, you know, respect 100% the needs of the district, but also respect the taxpayers, and I know our goal is usually to try and match about inflation, and we're getting away from that. And again, I'm just trying to think of creative ways where these positions aren't filled to allow the administration flexibility to decide where those reductions might be, but to, you know, recognize that there's probably over a million dollars of positions that are open, some of them that have been open for multiple years, and to say, look, you know, we probably shouldn't consider not raising money for these positions, and maybe even next year's budget, consider new positions that we too need, and, you know, have that money go towards that, or also consider the fact that we have future contract negotiations, and I'd like to see more of this money towards current staff salary, towards, towards infrastructure, rather than, you know, ultimately just kind of, you know, very, in a very limited way, it's just in our accounts, so that's at least how I would...
Any other comments on this? Jim?
Thank you. I'm concerned that this is a little bit of a shooting from the hip, you know, proposal, I mean, I understand the motivation to try to reduce the budget, but I think it's a backwards approach, we shouldn't be trying to hit a magic number, we should be trying to fulfill the needs of the district, and I think that just saying, well, we're going to cut this number of positions, there've been a lot of meetings and discussions from all of the different schools and administrators leading up to this budget that have resulted in the numbers we had before us, and I, I admire the ability to always reduce budgets, but, but again, I think at this point, as Kathy mentioned, with the elimination of the curriculum coordinator, that increase has dropped below 4%. I would hope that that would be considered a plus, and again, after all the work that everybody has put in to try and determine what the needs are, I feel here, without a deeper analysis, I'm a little bit afraid of just kind of cutting that money out.
Any other comments? Mary?
Yes, having sat in on the budget meetings, listening to the respective principals, having gone through very diligently what they know they need for their students, and in supporting their staff to that end, I'm very also aware of taxes going up, I have our own personal stories we can tell, but I think we owe it to the taxpayers as well to educate their children, and that's, we are entrusted at the school district to do that, and I see it happening very, very thoroughly and adamantly and deliberately and thoughtfully, and I'm, I'm very concerned that any cuts in the teacher, which we know and have said before, Stephanie, the caliber of the classroom teacher is, is the most important aspect of a student's achievement, so I, I am very concerned that with a stroke of a pen, we eliminate people who are directly engaged with those students, they, as I said earlier, they know their stories, they know their boo-boos, and, and certainly with the curriculum person, we've already had a vote, but the work that went into that to make those kinds of decisions, I find upsetting that it's just so quickly could be eliminated, and as a classroom teacher, I cannot not say that, that the coaches and that sort of support is crucial.
Okay, Brody, if you want to make a motion, make a motion, we'll vote on it.
I did, and I didn't get a second to reduce the wages by $320,000.
Okay, all those in favor of reducing wages by $300,000?
There's no second.
There's no second.
Oh, there's no second.
Yeah, the motion died.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, here and done, the motion does not go forward. All right, now the, the motion on the floor is on the budget right now, we're voting on the budget with a reduction of $140,000 for the curriculum position.
No, we voted on that.
We voted on that, we voted on the entire budget.
For the budget. We made the motion against the budget.
Charlene and Jim? Did I make the motion for the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Quick question.
So, you can make the second one.
Is this on? Yes. Quick question, what was the amount that the reduction of the curriculum project manager afforded us, 144 what?
$145,700, and it's technically $90. I know you said $90.
$145,790.
$90, yeah.
Got it, thank you, okay, that's all I got.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the budget with that reduction, all those in favor are voting the budget with that reduction, single is saying aye, Brody? Yes, I'm saying aye.
Aye, help me with the reduction of what?
The curriculum coordinator position.
So, we're voting on the budget that reduces or eliminates...
Eliminates that position.
But you're voting on the whole budget, it was already voted, so you're going to keep the, the rest is taken out, right, deny your vote for the rest of the budget.
Right, right, the, the elimination of the position was voted on, which passed...
Thank you.
Four to three, to eliminate the position, so now we have to vote on the budget as it currently stands.
So if I vote no, because of the elimination of the curriculum person?
Yep, you're just not supporting the budget as it's being presented.
And the budget as it's being presented is with the elimination of...
That is, that is correct. So if you vote no, and the rest of the board vote a yes, then it would be a six to one vote in favor or whatever.
So in favor of the budget with the elimination of the curriculum?
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, are we ready to vote on the budget? Okay, Brody?
No.
Okay, Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
No.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'm going to vote no, so that's a four-three on the budget. Four-three to pass the budget as presented.
Yep.
Okay, may I ask a question? Yes. Of course, there'll be another bite in the apple at the deliberative session, in theory, could someone come to the meeting and suggest the, adding the curriculum position back into the budget?
Absolutely. I think that's...
Or a warrant article for that.
Just an information.
Yeah, perfect.
Well, for board, I'm, but they, of course... Just clarification, my colleagues here believe that there's a deadline on that tomorrow, I believe that's not correct, because they can make a motion at the deliberative session tomorrow.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay. The first warrant article to vote for the board to vote on to see if the Governor of Wentworth Regional School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be added to the maintenance capital reserve previously established to maintain and repair schools and furthermore to name the school board as agents to expand. This sum to come from on from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four fund balance available for transfer July first, twenty twenty-four. Know about to be raised from taxation. Any questions on that? And that's it, that's different than our regular one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is going to be served account similar to our, this trophy. Okay.
Do you accept?
I'll second your motion.
Moved by Jim Pittman, seconded by Brody. Okay, all those in favor of the articles to raise one hundred and fifty thousand, set up one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go into the maintenance reserve, capital reserve fund, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And chair votes as well, Jim.
Referencing the earlier suggestion by Brody to put numbers here, seeing as Mr. Streeter and Dr. Manning are absent, what representation will they have in terms of this vote? I mean, this was a majority vote and approval, but if you're looking to attach discrete numbers, any suggestions on how their representation can be put into this?
We're here to vote.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's, that's the process. They're not here to vote, so their vote doesn't count.
However, that at the deliberative session, if the board chooses to re-vote the tallies on the warrant articles, that will be captured and will be placed on the ballot. So there is one more chance.
Okay, the second, second warrant article would be to see if the Governor of Wentworth Regional School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the turf field capital reserve fund previously established and furthermore to name the school board as agents to expand. This sum to come from the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four fund balance available for transfer on July first, twenty twenty-four. Know about to be raised from taxation. Do I hear a motion to approve or not?
So moved.
Moved by Brody?
Second.
Seconded by Jim Pittman.
Take the pair.
Yeah, that's okay. Charlene?
I just wanted to explain why I'm going to vote no on this. I can remember attending a building and maintenance committee meeting a number of months ago, and I had raised my concerns about studies that show the toxicity levels of materials in the turf. And I had asked that if we were going to continue down the road of using the turf field in spite of a number of different, different organizations not undoing their turf fields, I had asked if we could have, if we could make sure that we had some sort of a waiver statement for our athlete, our student athlete, parents deciding, acknowledging that, you know, if there were, if there was any issue that arise, that arises, that the school district was not going to be liable for that. And I, I'm guessing that since we never got a copy of any kind of a document that would accomplish that, that the decision was not to. And I, I'm concerned because I think that, I think it's important for parents to be fully informed so they can make the decision knowing what, what we know and what research has shown about the potential hazards of the chemicals that are used specifically in the crumble underlayment. And so although I certainly support our athletes and I want them to have a great field, I am going to, for the first time, not vote in favor of this.
Okay, thanks to Jim.
Charlene, I think maybe you were not present for follow-on building and maintenance meeting that addressed that. Were you there when the, I forget who spoke to that, but they essentially said there really was no viable alternative. The ones that were available may from coconut shells or husks or something, I don't remember exactly. I guess the one was that the expense would be so prohibitive that we can't really consider it and that also there was some concern about environmental impact from that. So the decision was made to continue with this. Now, that doesn't diminish questions or concerns, but I just didn't know whether you were there for that resolution.
I wasn't in attendance to hear that. I think that you or someone else shared with me that information. And I, I'm not sure that I ever received any kind of information regarding the third, third-party report of what, of what some of the issues were. And, and I can remember specifically asking for some kind of a report from some qualified agency that would actually determine what particular toxins were in our field. And I never heard anything back about that, so I'm guessing that that didn't happen.
Okay, any other discussion on the sixty thousand dollar warrant article for the turf field? Okay, it's moved, seconded to approve the warrant article for sixty thousand dollars. All those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
No.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes.
And chair votes aye, six to one vote for the turf field. Okay, the next warrant article is the maintenance warrant article. Shall the Governor of Wentworth Regional School District raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for repairs and improvements of the building grounds at the Kingswood Regional High School, Kingswood Regional Middle School, Lakes Region Technology Center, Kingswood Land Center, Lomond School, Crescent Lake School, Pennington Elementary School, New York School, Osmeby Central School, Tucktara Central School, and the S.A.U. forty-nine transportation facility. And this is the standard warrant article, and there'll be details of proposed projects at the deliberative session for use of these funds. Do I hear a motion?
Some.
Moved by Stephanie?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair votes aye as well, seven to nothing. And the last article with a slight amendment, to see if the Governor of Wentworth Regional School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-five thousand eighty dollars for a second school resource officer, SRO position at the Kingswood complex for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The school board recommends this appropriation, appropriation now. Again, a vote on that. And the, again, one of the reasons that we are putting this on as a one-year position, Tom's amendment, is to state that it's a second SRO position because this is not in place of, but in addition to the standing SRO determined in our budget. The reason that we're asking again for a one-year position on this is to give us some time to evaluate for a full year plus the second SRO position. We've gotten some input, but the time between the start of the school year and the vote on approving this as a permanent position is not long enough for us to evaluate for the long term. Do I hear a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jim? Seconded by Tom?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Tom? Okay, this is for the second SRO position for one year. All those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
All right, Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well, so that's a seven to the vote on this. Okay. Okay, the only one thing I have on the chairman's report is a letter of expression of sympathy to Sarah Creed. That's all I have. And Mary, you have an update for the?
I'm sorry, are we going to, have the people?
Oh, sorry, yes, you're absolutely right. Who would like to speak to what article? So first, I'll, I'll do the budget if nobody else wants to do it. Vote for hands.
I just, I have one question is, if you voted against, like, I shouldn't advocate for the budget because I voted against, and I guess that's kind of the?
You, you can't advocate for the budget. You, you can, you can support the, the school board's position, but you're not, you personally, you're not in favor of the budget as it's presented.
Yes, so, but you also voted against?
No, I didn't, I didn't vote against the budget. I voted against the?
Yeah, you did.
No, we did the?
The elimination. You voted against the budget.
When we voted on the budget, it was four-three, you were one of the ones that voted not.
Oh, I, I, I'm sorry, I did vote against the budget, against the?
I don't care, you're the one who presents the budget, I'm just pointing that out though. Someone may say, but you voted against the budget. I don't care though, I know that.
The board, the board supported the budget, so I can, as a board member, I can, so I can present the budget, even though I may not support it as it's presented. Okay. Okay, so who would like to speak to the capital reserve one hundred and fifty thousand dollars? All right, Stephanie, on the capital reserve budget? The sixty thousand dollar turf field, who would like to speak to that?
I'll do it. I did the last guy, so.
Okay. Okay, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars maintenance article is Jim?
See, is that the, the committee chair?
You are, all right.
I'll do the SRO.
And you'll do the SRO, Tom. Okay. Okay, so we're good with that? All right, so, thank God, you did the correspondence. Mary, do you have an update for the strategic plan?
Yes, thank you. The Governor of Wentworth Regional School District Leadership Team and School Board identified four focus areas as being the important starting points for setting goals and developing strategies for a strategic plan. This happened back in August. The committee solicited input recently from the larger community and students on areas of importance. Survey was sent out to the community and a series of student forums were held related to academic achievement, belonging, student wellness, and family and community communication and engagement. Informed by this feedback, the following goal statements for each focus area were determined through small and whole group reflection and collaboration. These goals speak to sustained effort and energy directed to them over a longer period of time. These focus areas are family and community communication and engagement, the goal being the district will engage and communicate with families and community members based on stakeholder wants and needs to build stronger relationships among educators and families in order to benefit students and schools. Focus area, student wellness, the goal of the district to identify and support student wellness, including mental health, nutritional, physical, and social, emotional needs. The academic focus, academic achievement focus area, the district will offer multiple learning pathways to improve academic achievement and make learning universally accessible to all students. And finally, the focus area of culture of belonging, the district will create a culture of belonging that fosters equity and values individuality wherein each student feels safe, finds their place, and makes healthy connections. Next steps with this committee will include the development of strategies and action statements that support the accomplishment of these goals for a linked set of priorities to reach the goals and to develop a three to five-year strategic plan that focuses action on areas of importance to our school district, the school years being twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. Any questions from the board and there are also members of the board who serve on that thing?
Brody? I just, I just had one, I just had one brief question. Yeah, it's a great report, I really appreciate being able to review it, and it sounds like the team's doing great work. Has it, has the team kind of explored with the, in relation to these goals, and I might be, I might be asking this question too early, but how the goals were being measured or if there've been some ideas kind of floated around? Because I'm just, some of them, I know it can be difficult to measure like numerically, but obviously there'd be certain outcomes that we'd like to see, or, I guess, do you have any comments?
Go ahead. No, it's your turn to take, no, go ahead.
Yes, we've, we've started drawing up preliminary ideas about measurement. For example, the academic achievement one is focused on improving academic achievement across the board, including to the students of, that represent and come from all different demographics. And so looking at disaggregated data and looking to see improvements in all, in all sub-populations to know if we're actually meeting the needs of all of them, or just things like that.
Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, Brody, at this point, the group is in the planning, implementation, strategy portion of this, so that along with the measure are still being developed.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, we are in committee reports.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. This is the meeting at which we finalize the suggested provisions, some of which we discussed at our last board meeting. And I have notes, and I know that Stephanie, you have created some recommended language looking at page two of two of ACB, a new policy that we're looking at. And as I recall, I wanted to maybe wordsmith number seven in that a little bit?
Yes. So are we going through this one? Are we going through this, so we're starting with ACB and?
I, my understanding, or at least I think the way we did it last time, I opened it up to ask anyone if they had suggested revisions for policies up for adoption. And we don't have to go through every single one because we didn't have revisions suggested for every single policy, but I do know that you had asked some questions about number seven on ACB, and you know, you can see that I have a few dog-eared pages here, but it's not every single policy I need.
Yeah, sure, I can go through, so on policy ACB, the one related to equity point seven, to revise the language instead of saying actively recruit, hire, and retain staff who reflect student demographics, to change the language to say actively recruit, hire, and retain staff who represent diverse demographics at all organization. Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to make that as an edit in that.
Okay, do we have a second on that edit?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Charlene. Any other questions on that particular edit?
So you want to strike student and replace it with just diverse? Yes.
Yes.
Who reflect diverse demographics instead of student demographics.
Any questions on that? Okay, we're going to vote, we're going to vote on that particular policy then with that revision? Because we're going to have to do that, I think, for each one of the policies.
Well, each one of the revisions here.
Oh, okay.
We're going to do, do a revision on any one of them we have to, on each one, each policy then.
May I make a suggestion? So, so this, for this example, you could say I'd like to make a motion to adopt ACB equity policy.
equity policy with one revision. And then, you're making a revision and adopting the policy at the same time.
Sure.
Does that make sense? Because otherwise, you're making a motion on a revision on a policy that doesn't exist yet.
Ah, good point.
Just a suggestion. Sure, so I make a motion to adopt ACB with the suggested edit. I just made it.
Okay, we have a second on that. Any other questions on that particular policy? Okay, all those in favor then of adopting ACB with the proposed revision? So we're saying aye. Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chair was I as well, listen. Okay. Next up?
For policy B E D D A, I have a suggested edit, so I'd like to make a motion to accept policy B E D D A with an edit to page one, section A, number five, which is to suggest I'd like to add the language and to receive relevant materials at least two business days before meeting, with exceptions for emergency meetings. At least a minimum.
Yeah, I remember we discussed this before. I mean, it was, we get all of our materials five days in advance.
Yeah, Thursday.
Except for unless something comes up last minute that's added to a gender review, which sometimes there's things that might be very benign that are added to the agenda, like maybe an informational thing. So, I mean, not that that, you know, not that it prohibits it. I guess, I guess, I'll stop you for a second, give me two seconds. I guess my point is, is that the policy, it would be difficult to enforce that because if something comes up, you know, on the Monday morning of that the board needs to address, you know, then the board just has to address it. There's nothing that prohibits it. But, and we're also already getting all of our materials five days in advance. We could do, I can see a week in advance being reasonable, which, you know, the School Board Association has a policy that does recommend that. But the admin told us that that can be difficult to get all the information, but maybe they could send us a preliminary, you know, seven days in advance, something easy. I guess my point is, if you want the material sooner, I think the two days requirement that you want to add won't achieve it. You'll still be in the same predicament.
I would love, I would love to get more than two days, but I think the discussion, I would love to have more than two days, but I think the discussion at the first read was concerned that administration couldn't do that, so please lose two days. Looking for thoughts? Because this is a suggested edit.
I wrote it, Brody.
Five days or?
Well, technically, we're, sorry.
Go ahead.
Technically, we usually get them Thursday prior to a Monday board meeting. And so, if you're looking for two business days, that's Thursday, Friday-ish. So, I think everyone understands that we'd like them as soon as possible. But how would we, if we wanted to change the policy to require something, I'm not, I'm not sure that the two business days does anything differently from what we already have.
I'd like to amend my motion to recommend adopting policy B E D D A with the language and to receive relevant materials at least five business days before meeting, except for emergency meetings.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
So, in some cases, that's going to not be possible. So I would recommend something in that language to say wherever possible, whenever possible. Otherwise, we'll have to stop and not have anything because we won't have all materials for you. So sometimes there's not enough lead time. You know, it's because we have policy meetings like a week before, and then we have to edit it. So five days, we, that's, five hundred days is essentially a week ahead of time.
So I'd like to amend my, amend my, to recommend.
You just withdraw and then start over.
To, and to receive relevant materials at least five business days before meeting whenever possible, with exceptions for emergency meetings.
I'll second again.
Thank you all for this.
Okay, if we can second it now.
Did you get all that, Kathy?
Do we understand what's being voted on?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor then of accepting B E D D A with the amendment that's presented? Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chair was I as well. Okay.
So, next, next thing, transfer appropriation, DBJ. Jack, I think you had a suggested revision or a concern about that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion then to approve BJ, BD, no.
DBJ.
With, but change the wording in the line that starts, any transfer in excess of $5,000 shall be required, shall require board approval. I'd like to change that to require the finance committee approval with the school board notice at our next regular school board meeting. There, there may or may not be an issue where a last-minute transfer has to be made. And it's a lot easier to get two, you know, three, three finance committee members together than any one in the school necessarily to vote on those things.
Second the motion?
I, I, I agree with what you're trying to do, Jack, when I questioned whether or not our finance committee statutorily has that power under the state law cited in the policy. This policy is one of the ones that's been written by the School Boards Association's legal counsel, and it cites the RSA's. And I'm pretty sure if we were to adopt this policy, only the entire school board has that authority. I don't know if we're permitted to delegate it. Maybe we are, but that's kind of a question mark. So I'm more inclined to go with the current language because it's been vetted by NHSBA legal counsel. And maybe we can address and look into that in the future. I know it was mentioned, usually each year, we have only about two line item transfers, two or three, that are over $5,000. So as long as some emergency doesn't happen before our next board meeting, that gives us time to adopt the policy and do a little bit more research. But we talked about it pretty extensively at our academic affairs.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I would, I would amend my motion then to, to change the amount from any transfer in excess of $20,000 that would require full board approval. I would feel more comfortable with that. I think $5,000 limit is, I, and Brody and I both know how it's done sometimes in the county, which can be a nightmare. And over $20,000 would be a more reasonable number than for the entire board to need to. So that would still give Kathy flexibility if it's a small amount of money to move things around. $20,000 is a significant amount that this whole board can vote on.
May I ask a question of the academic affairs committee? Is this the amount, $5,000, also what's recommended by the NHSBA?
Correct. This is exact. This is the exact language that came from the NHSBA's policy portal. It isn't a required, it isn't a recommended, it is an option. So to clarify that, too. So it's not like this is mandated by state law. It's not that they recommend it, but many school districts and municipalities have a policy like this because, at least in my opinion, it's important for the board to be involved in some of the fiscal decisions that are made. If it reaches over high amount, we don't want to micromanage. We also want to, you know, be involved in that process. I think the taxpayers, some of them have an expectation, a general expectation of that. That's my opinion.
Considering the difference of opinion, I would recommend this be sent back to committee for further research. So I recommend a not picking motion on it?
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion and I would ask Jim to make a recommendation of a motion then to send back to committee.
I move that we table this and send it back to committee for further information to verify the requirements.
I'll second that.
Discussion. What is it you need clarified, Jim? I thought, I mean, I thought because it's, it's a, pretty much a new boilerplate from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, that the only issue was the dollar amount. So if you could just be more specific in what you're not understanding, that would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah, I think the dollar amount alone, as the chairman has suggested, he would like to make that a higher amount for practicality purposes. So there's no question as to whether he has the power to do that or not. Failing the regulations being in front of us at the moment, I think it's a small prudence to send it back and to just confirm whether that's true or not.
That he can, that he can change the amount?
Correct. And then next month, we come back to it.
Okay.
And I just personally think that sending it back to change the amount to increase it would deem the policy, I mean, useless. We might as well then, you know, not adopt it. So I'm more inclined for us to just vote tonight and decide whether I would want to adopt it. There's nothing that precludes us from pulling it from our policies at the next meeting. There's nothing that precludes us from amending it at our next meeting.
Well, I think, I think, because you mentioned that it's, it's not a requirement by the, it's recommended by the School Board Association, it's certainly not a requirement. I think it's appropriate to take it back, let the committee look at it to see if they really want to bring it forward or not. If it's not required, do we really need it? And if so, is the dollar amount, again, set in stone or can it be easily changed?
I, I, my recollection is that we decided as a committee, when we decided to bring this forward, that we wanted it to be adopted, that it was important. And I, I don't, I guess I'm not understanding why this particular policy seems problematic other than just changing the amount, which I think committee members would be amenable to.
Well, if?
Well, I can't speak for Dr. Jim because he's not here.
If the, if the committee members are willing to increase the amount, I'd still be willing to go forward with the process. I've seen this, I've seen a similar process create all kinds of havoc at the county level. Now, some of that is maybe governed by RSA and all that stuff, which is fine, but it can create havoc in a business office if it's not a reasonable amount. And we're not in the business of micromanaging this district. Again, $20,000 might be a more reasonable number. $5,000, my estimation is not. If we can move the $20,000, we're willing to do that and move the process forward. But if there's a question whether we can and cannot move it from $5,000 to $20,000, I think it's appropriate to send it back to committee.
And I, I don't have a question about it. Could I poll the three members who are present and ask if, if they're in support of?
Sure.
Increasing the amount?
Sure.
Are we, are we voting?
No, she's just polling the, the members if they would.
Yeah, I don't, there's, I, if I'm not, Kathy, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, what is the current motion on the table with the second? Or have you withdrawn your motion, Jack? I, I'm trying to keep track. To send it back to committee.
Right now, the motion is to send it back to committee.
And that was, that was Jim Pittman?
That was Jim Pittman, and I seconded that.
Okay, so we have to vote on that?
Correct.
Okay, well, in the meantime, this part of the discussion, Mary, Brody, would you be okay reducing the amount from 5,000 to 20,000?
I would like to send it back to committee.
Okay.
I don't. I think we should just vote on it tonight.
Well, we could vote on whether it goes back to committee among our committee.
Good, Jim.
Well, I think Brody raises an excellent point if he says that there are specified amounts that we have to adhere to. So it's a simple question. It's just like, oh, let's find out. But you don't have that in front of you to show us.
There isn't specified amount in RSA 32 colon 10. It just gives us the power to be able to create a policy and to decide what amount we think is appropriate. We discussed that at the academic affairs committee meeting, and we decided that the suggested recommended policy from the School Boards Association, that that 5,000 that they had worked for other districts all across state and municipalities, and it seemed fine. And we asked Kathy O, how many times, if it would be overburdening, and the answer we got from the administration was maybe two or three times a year, the entire board would just have to vote, you know, and to say, yes, we'll transfer over $5,000. You know, I, I think it's a reasonable policy that, you know, when the taxpayers appropriate a certain amount of money and you're going to move thousands of dollars to another line, that they just know that you just vote on it publicly. You recognize that everyone says, okay, that makes sense. And the taxpayers understand that you're moving their money that they originally appropriated at town meeting from one line to another line to expend. That's, I mean, that's, that's the purpose of the policy. So I'm not really inclined to talk about it anymore in academic affairs. We talked about these things.
Okay, if I could just respond. I may have misunderstood your previous statement that we were not allowed to specify a different number. And I'm hearing you now say that there is a recommended number of 5,000. So we, we are, our hands are not tied to change that number to some other number, including the $20,000.
And I don't remember ever saying that, but if I did, I was, you know, I was mistaken. But, I mean, I've read the state law, and I was the one who asked the committee to consider this. We did with the admin, and we presented it. It sounds like there, you know, other board members would like a different amount. Let's vote on that different amount. I wouldn't support it. I like the policy as it is. But I think that, that saves the time of the academic affairs committee for having to go back and say, well, that's what they recommend at the School Boards Association. We want to change the number and then have a vote, then have to have a second vote here. We could just expedite the process and just decide as a board tonight.
Jim, I think there are two, there are two pieces here, I think. First, first of all, you're talking about a, a recommended policy from the School Board Association that is not binding, it's just a recommendation, and they have $5,000 in their policy. The state RSA that requires notification of transfer of funds has no dollar amount.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Well, then I would be very happy?
That's what you said.
No, RSA 32 colon 10 is a name that permits us at the governing body to adopt such a policy.
No, but there's no dollar in there.
There's no, I don't think there's a dollar figure. But the policy isn't even recommended by the School Boards Association. It's optional, too. So it's not mandated by the state, it's not recommended, it's option.
So I'm going to withdraw my motion so that we can go back to Jack's motion.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my second. And the motion on the floor then would be to approve DBJ with the recommended total of $20,000 as opposed to $5,000.
And I will second it again.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor then to approve DBJ with, as, as presented, with the dollar amount change from 5,000 to 20,000 with full board approval?
Yep. I guess, if I may, I think that would make the policy, you know, it would be essentially useless. I'm more inclined to just go with the NHSBA's recommended number, so I'm going to vote no, so we can adopt the language.
Okay, so you're a no. Charlene?
Yes.
They're approving with the $20,000. Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Tom?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair was yes. So four, four, three passes, it would be $20,000 in that policy. All right, let's move on.
Okay. I'm sharing this because Brody very kindly loaned me his copy. Okay, EEAA, which is video and audio surveillance on school property. I don't remember who had a question at the last meeting about item C, additional video and audio recordings authorized. So I'm hoping whoever that was has brought some suggested revisions tonight.
I looked at, I looked at that again, and because the policy is specific to surveillance, I don't think any edits need to be made because we're observing student classes. We don't have videos surveillance in those cases.
So we can move to the next policy with questions and concerns that I had noted at the last meeting. EHAA, item number eight on page one. There was concern about that particular item and looking for what revised language any of you might have chosen for us to consider. The current number eight reads, "Any communications created, sent, or retrieved using email may be read by individuals other than the intended recipient."
Yes, I had, I had questioned that, but it was explained that that was because we're subject to 91A, and anybody could read any policy sent by any member of, with a government or the email address. The one edit I would suggest in this policy is on number 10.
Right.
And it just is to clarify what is meant by discharge, which I believe in this case means termination of employment.
Or dismissal.
Correct, or dismissal.
I think, I think it would be good to clarify that because it says including discharge. Do we want to change discharge to dismissal or termination of employment? Termination of employment would probably be the most clear. I'm good with that. All right. I will make a motion that we approve policy EHAA with the suggested edit on number 10 to replace the word discharge with the words termination of employment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so just before, we'll take a little motion on this, just a second. We've got a motion, a second, so we're going to vote on this one?
Well, we have to vote on the revision and-
Were you voting on the policy with the revision?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That is EHAA.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for EHAA with the revision. All those in favor with the revision? Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Now, before we go on, we have not voted on EEAA, EEA- You have expectation. We have not voted on those three. If there's no changes on them, we voted for the notice block.
Right, so I would make a motion that the policies on which we have not previously voted, recommended for adoption, the list with all the alphabet, that we approve those as a block at this point in time. Are you including EI as well, the risk management that follows EHAA? I think so, because no one-
Okay, there's no, no changes on that, let's include-
Correct.
That one with that. So EEAI, risk management as well. So we're voting on that, that block of four policies.
Yes. One, two, three, correct. EEA, EA hyphen E through EI.
Okay. Okay, motions remain, seconded. All those in favor, Brody?
I seconded. Aye. I second Kathy.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Charlie?
Aye.
And Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay.
Okay, now we're going to zip through the policies for revision and reaffirmation, and we have a few suggested, or a few concerns, suggested revisions. I may have, I think we discussed this at the last meeting, but on page two of two of BG, we had agreed in committee, and if you look at the last sentence under K, we're going to move that sentence to its own L, which we started to do, but-
That did get done, Charlie.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, this is, I'm sorry, this is my last, that got done.
Oh, it did? Okay, I didn't check it on my phone, so, yes, and I left my copies there, I'm sorry. Okay, so that got done. Yay! You brought your old ones on down.
And we, all the edits were made that were requested, other than we had Mary have those amendments.
Okay, so on ECB hyphen R, did, under J, did you add "and" hate groups? Was that added?
The rental agreement.
On the rental agreement of the fee schedule?
I have the groups.
I don't, I don't think, when I looked, I didn't see it.
I don't remember voting on it.
We haven't, because it was a suggested revision at our first read, so do we need to vote on that now?
Make the motion to make that.
Yeah, it was discussed. Okay, well, since I've got my phone on, I will make a motion that under ECB dash R, Facility Use Fee Schedule, under item J, which currently reads, "Organizations designated by federal agencies as domestic terrorist organizations will not need committed to rent," I would like to insert after organizations, "and hate groups." That's my motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions?
I was just wondering, Charlene, were you able, because you mentioned that you're going to do some research, were you able to find a place where any federal agencies has classified hate groups and how it's defined? Because I know I had mentioned in Academic Affairs that I was concerned, because I know with domestic terrorist organizations, those are pretty clearly defined by like the FBI and other federal agencies. It's been upheld in federal court that you can prohibit those organizations from using public facilities and spaces if it, you know, shows a present danger with hate groups while, you know, no one likes hate groups. I just wonder if it runs into a constitutional issue? We don't have some kind of objective criteria?
And I did do my research, as I said I would, and I went to, I can't remember the exact website, it was a, it was an FBI website where they had, they had all of the classifications and the designations, and they did have a separate classification for hate groups, but I didn't get a definition because we don't have a definition for domestic terrorist organizations. And I thought, well, we don't define what that is, we just say organizations designated by federal agencies. And the only federal agency I looked into was the FBI. And I suppose, you know, the CIA, and the NSA, and Homeland Security might have their own way of doing this, but the FBI has hate groups as a group of organizations that, you know, they watch for. So that, I mean, that was what I found out, and based on that, that was why I thought that it should be added, because it's not, it's not considered necessarily, it doesn't necessarily come under the umbrella of domestic terrorist organizations, it's a separate group. And, you know, I understand what you're saying, because there's some groups that have been designated as hate groups by non-governmental agencies. And so I thought that to keep it consistent and clean and legal, if we stuck with organizations designated by federal agencies. Does that answer everybody's question? Oh, gosh. There was, I should have written down the link, actually, I should have probably forwarded the link to all of you.
Okay, we can't, we can't be spending all night going over each one of those. One thing, Charlene, let's go, let's go back, before we even vote on this, let's go back to the first, this initial list on the agenda. And was there a change to BG?
I'm sorry?
Is there a change to policy BG? Okay.
Yes.
And you voted on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a change to the, the next one down, EBBB? If there's no changes on the next several until we get to what we're talking about, let's approve those as we move forward.
Okay, well, I was just going by the packet I received. I was just going in order of the packet. So if the ECBR does seem to be out of pocket, if you'd like to skip that until later, if you'd like to go-
Well, I'm just going by our agenda items. If we look at the, those that are on the agenda, from EBB to EBCC, long threats, if there's no changes on that block, let's hold on that block and get those blocks out of the way.
I agree, Jack. If there's, if no one has any edits, I'll make a motion that, and we did vote on BG at least, not that I remember, so I'll make a motion that we adopt policies BG through EBCC. So the first, these, in our agenda, the A, B, C, D, E, F, G, under the subsection to Academic Affairs.
I just have a spelling correction to make in policy EBBD dash R for anti-Idling. It says, in the first bullet, in the last line, it says three instead of there.
Oh, that was-
It's just a spelling error, or the wrong word was used.
Got it.
Got it. So I don't think that's a-
Okay.
I'll make my motion with that edit, to adopt those seven policies.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to adopt BG through EBCC with that one modification. All those in favor, Brody?
Oh, wait, just hold on a second. I have a quick question. Could, could you read for me on policy BG, page two of two, could you read me what item L states, please?
So it will say, "The board requires all employees and students to comply with its formally adopted policies. Failure to comply will be considered cause for disciplinary action."
Okay, and that's L now? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, a motion on the floor then to approve BG through EBCC. Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And chair votes aye as well. Okay, now we can move back on to ECR with your, any modifications that are being made to ECR?
Just hate groups.
Just the hate groups.
Just adding "and" hate groups after domestic terrorist organizations.
Okay, so you're making that motion? Who's going to second that? Who's going to second that?
I'm fine with that.
Oh, okay, you're, you're, okay. So, so we're going to pass ECR as amended with the word hate groups? Yes? All right. Okay, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Okay. Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Six to one vote. Okay, we are. ECA?
I did not.
Any, any others that are, that are being modified at this point, going down the list? Which is, which is the next one to have a modification?
Mary pointed out something to the ECB hyphen E1. And if you look, that's the GW RST facility use contract for Kingswood Complex, and it's also in E1 for-
Elementary.
Elementary. When we originally talked about it, we just, we put police hours, but Mary pointed out that what we really should do, and I agree, do you want to speak to that? Nobody saw my lips move without, did they? So I just, what caught my eye was the police hours, knowing that it's more than police, I would assume, it's taken into consideration, and then looking at the other policies prior to that, my suggestion is the language be consistent. For instance, ECBR says, under C, police and/or other emergency services is on the second page, cost of police protection and emergency services. And then use of school buildings, facilities refers to those, and then we have the forms, which just say police hours.
May I weigh in? So the reason that, the reason that they have police hours and not any emergency services is that were required per another policy, to have a trained, actually, it's right here in CB, to have a trained crowd control manager, which is the police, required for any public event involving groups of 50 or larger. So that's what this is for, the police hours, to be the crowd manager. So it's not necessarily like a fire, necessarily, it would be for the crowd manager. So when it hits that threshold of 50 spectators, so for example, graduation, some basketball games, football games, theater events, when it hits 50, we have to have the police there.
Dr. Eric Allen, to that point, in the elementary contract for elementary schools is a separate line for crowd control manager that's not on ECB U1.
Okay.
So maybe we could make them congruent and-
Where? Oh, I see it. So the renter will hire police. I think that's because the high school is only in Wolfboro, and elementary is through wherever the town is. So for elementary, the appropriate police department, you know, so if they're in Osiphe, they'd hire Osiphe police. So that's why they're slightly different. I believe that's what you're referring to.
So you're saying that because the Kingswood Complex is in Wolfboro, it's, there's an, it's implied that crowd control?
It says police there. The renter will have, hire police is needed directly through the Wolfboro Police Department?
But it says as, as needed, so should it say, you know, I think it's not needed if it's under 50. If it's under 50, okay. But, but also in the policy ECB, it says, at the rentee's discretion, we can require them to have police, correct? So.
The elementary one was edited in 2009, and the one for the Kingswood Complex is more updated, so maybe we should go back and just confirm the crowd control, and then it be consistent with the vote. It says, it has it more specifically on the-
Elementary. Yeah, it separates-
Is there a change that, well, your suggestion?
I would like to see them congruent between the two, so police and crowd control, you know, there may be a need for a crowd control manager of a police above and beyond that. And because we can require a renter to, to have police, I think, like to marry, to your point, instead of just saying police hours, we should say police required, yes or no? Like, are we requiring them to hire a local detail for this event, that's in the contract?
The reason I, I requested hours, and the reason for hours is so that we know how much the police need to be compensated, because they're paid company. So it wouldn't be just police, yes, it's so then-
That's for them to do.
No, but we want it transparent, so then they know how many hours they're requesting to use it, and they need to know how many hours they're going to have police there, so then they know, okay, there's going to be four hours of police, and because we're kind of theoretically could be the pass-through for that money, they're going to have to pay us additional money, so then we can pay the police department.
That's not what the policy says before, though, it just pays directly to the police.
It's helpful to have the hours on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm just basing it off of what we had a recent event, that's kind of how it works, so maybe I'm mistaken. I could be.
Okay, are there specific modifications we're making to these policies? I mean, at some point, we have to move and make a motion to approve something.
Sorry, appreciate the explanation. I, I'm not going to make a motion to- Appreciate. One more time. I appreciate the explanation that helped me-
I appreciate the explanation, that helped me greatly, um, and I'm not, I personally will not make a, a motion to change it based upon how you've explained it.
So, I have a question. Um, the whole, the, I think one of the reasons that we became more focused on these particular questions is because of, um, needing to make sure that every renter knows that, oh, hey, you're going to be responsible for these particular agencies that are going to, that are going to cover your event. And so, the fact that we will have more agencies other than just the police, for example, fire rescue, um, I, I don't want there to be any wiggle room for any renter to say, "Oh, hey, you didn't tell me that I was going to have to also reimburse for fire rescue." So, you know, I, I'm just. Well, yeah, we have added that to ECBR facility use fee schedule, but it seems to me that when we have the facility use contract, it should be consistent with what we have in the fee schedule, what we have in the policy itself. And so that is the consistency I'm looking for.
Okay, so what, you wanna send, you wanna send these back to, to, for revision?
No, I want to vote on a revision tonight.
Okay, well, what's your, what's your motion for revision?
Well, let me go back and see what the exact policy language was, ECB. You got it, okay. Okay, here we go.
I would like to revise ECB hyphen E1 and ECB hyphen E2 to have pol, in, police in front of hours modified to say, "Police protection and emergency services", or police slash emergency services, police and emergency services.
Well, as it's written, police protection and emergency services, that's the con, that's the content?
Yeah, so have it say, "Police protection and emergency services", and then have that in front of hours. That is my suggested revision.
Okay, we have, we have any seconds to their motion?
Second.
Okay, so we're, we're voting now on ECA through ECB dash two, correct?
Wait, what?
ECB one.
E1.
E1 and E2.
Uh, ECB, E, E, E1 and E2.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the, so we're voting on that block?
Um, okay, wait a minute. Yeah, I think, I think that's administrative, things will fix. Right, adding the, the crowd control, so it's consistent over both, over all of our schools, right?
Sure.
I just want to be clear. So that was a revision for that, for those two particular, um, we've already voted on hate groups. And I, I'm a little confused. I was, I was under the impression that we were going to vote on the revisions to a particular policy.
Okay, we can do that, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna now go, go through the agenda, okay? We'll vote on these two, we should have done those already, not that much, or those two policies, but then we have to move back.
Right, and vote on the rest of them as a block.
So we'll vote on those as a block. Going forward, we're gonna vote in blocks where the pick one in the middle of the list. So I'm gonna, I'm talking to it. So, um, anyway, let's, we're, we're gonna vote right now on, um, ECB dash E1 and ECB dash E2 as revised, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Jim?
Yes.
And Chair Wozzai as well. Now we're gonna go back, and we're gonna vote on, and we're gonna take a motion on ECA through, um, ECB, um, as a block.
Still moved.
Okay, it's been moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to vote on ECA through ECB as a block. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair Wozzai. All right, now we are on ECE, any revisions?
There were no. Oh, okay, I was gonna say, there were no suggested revisions in New Durham, but now we have one, so, okay.
It's so to, um, the, the language says based on grade level, um, and when I.
Which policy?
Um, policy ECE is the one that I was asking about to the chair. Um, so, uh, to add clarity, I recommend adding clarity, I recommend adopting the policy, um, with clarity added to based on grade level, to say, um, based on seniority of grade level. Unless it is the case that that means if you get better grades, you have a better likelihood of getting a parking pass. But it's, it's seniority, so seniority, so based on seniority.
Isn't that great, not the group? Oh, you said seniority.
That implies.
And so.
That implies seniority, yeah.
So when I, when I read this, uh, language to a couple of parents, they said, "Oh, so if my child gets better grades, they're more likely to get a parking pass." And I said, "No, I don't think that's what it means, so just to clarify, based on seniority of grade level."
Yeah, that, my intention was seniority, so I will second your motion.
Okay, so we're on EC.
Based on seniority in grade level.
Seniority in, or of, or, how do we say that?
Of.
Seniority of grade level, okay.
Okay, uh, motion on the floor then to approve ECE with your amendment. All those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Chair Wozzai as well. Okay.
That's good.
What's the next one, which revisions?
I, I'll just let you, Stephanie has revisions, I haven't, I ate them last time.
Sure, so it calls the EEB and.
Wait, 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 EEB?
Yep.
So we're gonna want to vote on a block from E, uh, EDC.
To EEF, let's do that.
EBA, yes. Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of voting on that block, uh, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Um, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, Stephanie, you're up.
Okay, um, policy EEB, athletic transportation. Um, I'm actually, uh, recommending that this might go back to committee because, um, there is, there is substantive and contradictory information in paragraphs one and two. In paragraph one, the exceptions, um, must be given to the coach, and in paragraph two, given to the athletic director. Um, it doesn't clarify if the policy covers fan buses, um, theater clubs, things like that, and other, um, uh, things that use transportation, or if we have other policies for those other pieces. Um, so I'd like to send that back to.
Okay, you're making a motion to send back to committee?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, so EEB, athletic transportation, there's a motion to go back to committee. Brody?
Yeah, I guess. Do we have, I mean, do we have an existing policy to regulate this, and we get rid of this, and we have no policy regulating this kind of, um?
Are you asking? So we have.
Yeah, I guess, I, I'm sorry.
Well, we're not eliminating it, we're just sending it back to committee for further review.
Oh, yeah, it already, okay, I'm sorry.
This is only for athletics, so we don't have additional transportation.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor are sending EEB back to committee, uh, Brody?
Aye.
Uh, Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Stephanie?
Tom?
Jim? Yes.
Chair Wozzai.
Can you, can I just, um, ask a question?
Yeah.
So could you send us, um, the, the clarity that you're looking for in that? So going back to committee, I don't think we're clear on why it's going back to committee at this time. So if you could send us that at another, and send it to the committee? Thank you.
Okay, next, next one up for revision?
Um, well, that, wait, that's fine. If you email the whole committee, that'll be a forum of five, so maybe.
You can just email us.
Yeah, I, Charlie.
It was just not in the motion or the discussion, so we, it'll go back to, um, it'll go back to committee, and there won't be a discussion in committee because we won't know why it was brought back.
I articulated, right. I shared my reasons, but I. I can show them again?
Sure.
I'm not sure if that was captured. We don't have what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
Email me and Heather, yeah?
Sure. Does everybody want to know, or do, I can just send it?
They all voted yes on it without knowing.
He's going, he's going back to committee.
Yeah, Charlene will be sure.
All right, what's the next one up for revision? EF, we have EF as the next, the next one, any changes on EF?
Any of the.
Any of the other ones right to the end, what do we got?
I have, um, one, one on JKA, so I would like to make a motion to approve as a block EF through JFABD.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Oh, hold on, wait a second, I'm sorry. Yeah, ER, so EEB is one that's. Okay, so we're voting on EF through JFABD?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, cool, got it, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Tom?
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, JKA?
So, um, on page 14 of policy JKA, boy, that was a mean one to put as the last one of the block at this time, because it's page 14. Um, DOE should be NHED.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I had them update that.
And a, a question to Dr. Eric Kelly relative to section C, which is what that's from, um, is does NHED and DHHS generally provide two separate forms? Or is that dated, um, collected annual school safety report?
It's one form.
Or, or four?
On form, it's one form.
Um, and my, and just one question I have, and I don't, I don't think there'll be an edit necessary, but, um, oh, sorry, there is one more edit, page 19 of the policy, the section dissemination of policy is listed twice. That whole section is copied and pasted twice. Out here.
Yeah.
On page 19.
Yeah.
I see it only once. Oh, no, now I see it.
Yeah.
You know, we've got, that's a, uh, NHSBA's probably, um, mistake.
They are not perfect.
Okay, so we're, so we're gonna eliminate that, that.
The redundancy, yes.
So eliminate the redundancy in, uh, on page 19 and the edit with the DOE. Um, and just a, a question I have, um, and it doesn't necessarily constitute a policy edit, is on page nine, in the definition of seclusion, I'm wondering if that encompasses the removal of a class from a child? If that would consti, so if a, if a, if a class of students is removed from a child that's dysregulated, would that then create an instance of seclusion?
I would say it's not the act of removing the class, it is where the student themselves are, and they need to know that they can leave that area, they need to have an adult with them, they need to know, you know, the situation. It's not the actual act of the class evacuating. So it's, it's, it's around more of where the student is. Um, so if they're left alone in that class, that could be seclusion.
I'm, I'm not gonna. I'm not going to tinker with this policy language, because I know it's defined in statute, um, but that was just a question I had in terms of the interpretation, because I know that situation, but, so just with those two edits to JKA.
I'll second, I'll second your motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Approving JKA with the revisions, Brody?
Aye.
Mary? Stephanie?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Now we're on to what goes.
I'll make a motion to withdraw, um, all the policies for withdrawal tonight.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to withdraw all the policies as listed, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Um, Jim?
Yes.
Chair Wozzai.
Thank you all for your patience.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay, we are on to building and maintenance.
Boy, do I have a lot to say. I'll just mention the next meeting of the Building Amendments Committee will be on the 18th of this month. It'll be at 4:30 at the SAVU office, and I have nothing else to report.
Okay, uh, under finance, I have, uh, two items to be acted on on finance. There, there's some, um, in meeting and discussing finance committee, um, modifications of some pay structures for substitute teachers and, um, other, um, other, other pay for Paris, uh, in the classroom. We would like to propose and make a motion that we support permanent increases in substitute pay from $100 a day to $150 per day for teaching positions, and increasing regular substitute pay from $75 a day to $25 a day.
Second.
Do you second that? Did you make it a motion?
I did make it a motion, uh, for, for power positions, for power positions as well, yes, I'm sorry. But that's a second, that's a second motion.
Oh, wait.
You said, you said a motion.
This one, this is teachers.
Yes.
Parents, $75. And this one's.
Yes. Yeah, we're saying substitute.
This parent, it's $75.
Right, right, right.
So this is a substitute, but these all of them.
Yep. Okay, so the, so the motion, the motion is to, uh, support permanently increasing substitute pay, uh, from $100 to $150 for teaching positions, increasing substitute pay for, uh, from $75 to $125 for power positions.
I'll second. Yeah, so is that both agenda items, the one and two?
That is, no, that's, that's the one, that's the first one.
Doesn't change my second, I'm seconding, I just did over twice.
So if you moved and seconded to, uh, to support that increase, all those in favor, Brody?
Aye.
Charlene?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Tom? Yes. Yes.
And my second motion is to increase the power pay to $25 an hour for subbing for teaching positions. This was something that was in place during COVID, uh, we eliminated, but it should be brought back as a standard of practice.
Are you making?
There is my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any questions? Okay, Dana? Uh, Dana?
It's getting late, but I.
Brody?
Aye.
Mary?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yes. Everybody, yes.
Okay, that's all I have under finance, um, and nothing else under human resources. At the time, we are working with, uh, the Human Resources, uh, Committee and, um, on other pay, pay structures and all that as, as we move forward. It's gonna take a little bit of time for us to get that all in place, um, but that's all I have right now under, uh, Human Resources.